We'll call the City of Vermillion regular scheduled meeting for 6:00 PM, Monday, March 3rd, 2025 to order. Katie, would please call roll.
Toller, Lieber, Price, Holland, Jenna Wein, Helwig, Cheesman, Murrah, Mayor Cole.
Here. We stand in for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible)
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes for February 18th, the joint meeting, the February 18th special meeting, and the February 18th regular meeting? If so, are there any changes to the minutes or motion to approve? Motion approved by Councilor Jenna Wein. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Holland. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Minutes are approved, adopted to the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? If so, are there any changes or a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Councilor Holland. I think there's a second by Councilor Murrah. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Agenda is adopted. Visitors to be heard. For visitors to be heard, persons addressed to council at the microphone at the podium, please raise your hand to be recognized before going to the podium and please state your name and address. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard. Remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. On each agenda item, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced and by the mayor and explained by staff, and any citizen who wishes may speak for one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed, the topic given to the governing body for possible action. At that point, only city council members and staff may discuss the agenda item unless there is a question moved by the council to another person, they may speak, or if there's unanimous consent from the council. Questions from the council members, however, may be directed to staff or members of the public through the presiding house at any time. Is there any visitors to be heard for any item not on the agenda today? Seeing none, moving on to the next item, public hearings. That's correction. We have no old business, so new business right out the gate. We have a request for South Dakota Shakespeare Festival to close Main Street from Plum to Walker on June 26, 27, 28, and 29 for Shakespeare Festival.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a similar request to many previous years. As you noted, it's to close East Main Street from Plum Street to Walker Street, and that would be from 6:45 PM to 9:00 PM on Thursday, June 26, Friday, June 27, Saturday, June 28, and Sunday, June 29 of this year. The closure is to help do a couple of things. One is as patrons go to the event, that they can come and go without the traffic right there immediately abutting it. Also to reduce noise that cars starting or going alongside the performance as they're. Also, I would note that this request, we would be removing parking in the north side of Main Street for those days as well. This allows for the equipment, the changing trailers, things related to the performance to be stored in that area as well. The barricades that are there, they typically have volunteers at both ends to staff those barricades in the event ambulance needs to get to the hospital or other emergency vehicle needs to get through. I think that, and then they will also be notified in the hospital, and they do handle cleanup of the area as it relates to the event in those four days. We would recommend approval of the request to close East Main Street from Plum Street to Walker Street on those four days in late June of this year.
Thank you, John. Any visits to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Councilor Holland?
Since I'm the author of it, I abstain from voting.
Thank you, Councilor Holland. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion approved by Councilor Lieber, second by Councilor Price. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries with one abstain. Next item would be a request to close Main Street from West High School Parking Lot entrance to Norbeck and on Anderson Street to Mulberry Street for the Vermillion Fire Department's Operation Prom Night scenario on April 7.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The Vermillion Fire EMS Department, in conjunction with multiple other local and state agencies, will be providing a real-world scenario for junior and senior classes of the Vermillion High School. This scenario is also planned to include a medical helicopter. This event has previously been held to show students an as-real-life-as-possible scenario on how poor decisions can lead to poor outcomes. This scenario reflects a mock DUI accident and how do the first responders handle these situations. The last time this scenario was done by our department was in 2019. Flyers will be distributed by the fire marshal to all the affected properties on April 2nd, 2025. The West High School Parking Lot will be available for entrance and exit and for any vehicles to turn around. The police, street, and fire EMS departments have all been notified of the closure and request and have found no safety concerns. This event will occur during the Business Day and should not result in overtime expenses for the city. An administration recommends that the city council approve the temporary closing of East Main Street from the West High School Parking Lot entrance to South Norbeck Street and Anderson Street from East Main to Mulberry Street on Monday, April 7, 2025, from 11:00 to 2:00 PM for the Operation Prom Night scenario. An alternative rain date has been set for April 8 at the same times.
Thank you, Chief Kalin. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Discussion by council. Chief Kalin, I just want to say thank you for coming to the council and not asking for money this time.
That's later. No offense.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion approved by Councilor Murrah. Is there a second by Councilor Jenna Wein? Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Post say nay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next up, we have an annual library report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you guys again for the time on your agenda tonight. I know you just heard from me last month with library updates. I'm back again. I promise you, this will be some different information and new information, so not too much of the same. But as many of you already know, state law requires we submit an annual report every year to the state library and our governing body, the city. The format of that report, the one you have in your packet, is determined by the state library. They compile the information into a collection of data available for libraries throughout the state and their governing bodies. And completion of that annual report is also tied to federal funds the state receives, along with matching funds for the state library that pays for databases, resources, training, and a variety of other subscriptions for the state library. In your packet today, you have four things. The first one I put on top is the easy, at-a-glance version of the annual report, an infographic version that just highlights some of the core statistics. The second part is the actual main FY2024 annual report on that template the state library requires. You also have the state library's facts and stats publication. That's a summary of last year's results, once they've all been compiled and analyzed and put together by the state library. It gives you a good overview of how much our public libraries are used across the whole state of South Dakota. And then the last one is a copy of a survey infographic every year in December. For the last six years, we've done a survey to get community members' feedback on the library, and that one-page infographic summarizes that. If you have any questions tonight, please don't hesitate to ask me or anytime, but just to kind of highlight some of the core information. In '24, we were pleased to see library visits up 7% compared to last year with over 65,000 visitors coming through the library. Total circulation of library materials was 71,963. That was about 2.5% difference to the previous year. Within this, the circulation of electronic materials grew notably, again, as it has been with over 21,700 electronic checkouts. If you're familiar, many of them are in a Libi app, ebooks, and downloadable audio books. That was up about 24%. By category, adult circulation down about 5%, children's up about 3%, young adult down 21%, and then new books decrease a 2%. Overall, if we put together our library resources for both physical and electronic materials, it was up about 3%, a little short of 94,000. For in-person programming, we offered around 500 programs again to the community, and we had an attendance of 7,354 participants. Computer usage, we saw 9,914 sessions on our public computers in the library and a further 22,600-plus sessions on our library's Wi-Fi in the building for people using their own devices, tablets, laptops, cell phones. We had a variety of programs for all community members. We were especially excited to see some presentations that included a return of author Lou Ragus to do a follow-up second presentation on his book, Vanished in Vermillion. Hannah Haxgar did a presentation on the Women in the Homestead Act of 1862. We were lucky to get the one book South Dakota author, Stop Again, on the Tour of the State. Trent Presler talked about his book Little and Often at the library last year. Our own author Ralph presented on the 20 Dead Men and the History of the Death Penalty in South Dakota. You may have seen that. And then other local author Greg Redlin presented on his Janklowe, a novel of power and politics on the prairie. We're excited to see that. We continue to collaborate with a whole variety of community groups, including the American Legion, Greening Vermillion, Parks and Rec, Southeast Casa, the Cultural Association, the School District, OLE, the Humanities Council, Shakespeare Festival, Music Museum, and multiple individuals and departments from USD. One of the highlights from 2024, it was the 50th year of our Library Summer Reading Program. We were excited to host that with the theme Adventure Begins at Your Library. We had another great year, registrations up on the previous year with 167 kids, 40 18s, and 90 adults registered. In a 2024 library survey, the sixth one, responses were up 68% over last year, and we're pleased to report that all the respondents rated the library's customer service, but also the library overall as excellent or good. 98% rated our facility as excellent or good, and 88% rated the library's collection as excellent or good. And I would highlight, we're always continually appreciative of the work of our Library Foundation and Friends Group. They provide a lot of extra funding and assistance for the library. Foundation projects in 2024 included the new couch and love seat in the children's area, the addition of more local newspapers and high school yearbooks to our digital archives, and new public computer and print management software. The Friends provided funds for the summer reading program activities, other youth programming and teen programming, and funded some of the book and movie collaborations we did with the Cultural Association over at the movie theater. They also purchased two new MetaQuest virtual reality headsets for use in our children's programming and youth programming. And the Friends work every month with the library book sale, raising funds for library programming is a great benefit for the whole community. But that's kind of like a high-level highlight of everything in the report. I don't want to keep you guys here all night. I'm happy to answer any questions if you've got anything, but I would just finish up by saying, you know, I appreciate the city council's ongoing support for our public library, and I'd suggest the annual report demonstrates what a valuable resource the library is for our community in a variety of different ways, including resources, rooms, programming, and technology. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion. I just want to take one moment to say thank you so much for running a, in my opinion, fantastic library, and I think you guys are not giving the accolades you deserve, especially in recent, recent stuff going on, and I think you guys are doing a wonderful job in our community, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Helwig?
I want to talk about recent stuff going on. So can you talk a little bit about House Bill 1041? I know that the proposed, or the now new plans cuts are smaller, thankfully, than was previously proposed and are now going to allow to at least seek the federal funding, but, you know, we're still looking at about 825,000, I think, in cuts at the state level. Can you talk a little bit about how that might impact us?
The latest draft, as you mentioned, is much better than that original draft. The original draft essentially left nothing of the state library apart from the Brown and Talking Book Program and switched. Instead of using the federal funds, they got in the past to pay for that to use state funds. The latest version still cuts some services. Fortunately, many of the ones we get the most use of, it looks like they'll stay. So interlibrary loan, all but right now, but four of the databases we received from the state's 50 would remain. Unfortunately, two of the ones going, as I understand it, is the Ancestry and Heritage Quest ones that involves like census data and genealogy research resources. It's possible they may come back when the Electronic Resources Committee has a chance to meet, depending on how the legislation goes. From my understanding, the collection of the state library is pretty much going to be wiped out. That space in the building is going to be given over, I think, to the Department of Education. So all the government docs they've got, the professional development resources, the local history resources will be somehow divvied up, either offered to other libraries. I've not seen any plan or information about that. When I was here on Saturday talking to our representative, I did mention to Chris, you know, I still have some concerns, but it looks a lot better than it did originally. It does sound like this, you know, that is a placeholder for now, and there is still some talk about possibly reducing those cuts further, but I don't think we'll know until we get much closer to that deadline and they have a better idea of what money is available. You know, as some of this other legislation has come and gone and things have been rejected, it's freed up some funds. I'm hopeful that those cuts will be reduced further. If we're really lucky, maybe those cuts will be eliminated and there will be no changes. We will definitely lose some access to some things, but at least with this latest proposal, the things we use most will still be there. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much. I believe, do we need a motion to accept this?
Yes.
Can we get a motion to accept the annual report?
Second.
Motion by Councilor Helwig, second by Councilor Price. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Next is an agreement with Midwest Landscaping Company to construct an overlook at Cotton Park. Mr. Goblish?
Good evening, and thank you. In 2001, the Vermillion Rotary Club built and donated a fishing pier on the banks of the Vermillion River, just east of the Dakota Street Bridge. The structure sat approximately 40 feet away from the hike bike trail, overhanging the river. While not always great for fishing, it was often used as a rest area for trail users wanting to see that area down there and take a break. The structure generally withheld the high-water events in the past. However, with the flooding events that took place in June of 2024, the fishing pier platform was destroyed. Only today, the piers remain. Flooding has been a reoccurring issue along portions of the city-owned property near the Vermillion River. However, the 1,000-year flood event in the June of '24 caused unprecedented damage. The governor declared the area a disaster and requested a major disaster declaration from the president. On August 5, 2024, FEMA officially declared the area a master, a major disaster area due to the severe flooding, as well as some of the events that took place at the wastewater and other areas here in Vermillion. While working with FEMA, FEMA provided the city with a vermillion of options that could be done to replace the fishing pier. Those options included rebuilding the pier to the original state that it was in, relocating the fishing pier, undertaking an alternate project in the same general area, or not replacing or rebuilding at all. After discussions with FEMA representatives and city staff, it was decided the best use of the FEMA funds would be for an alternative project, constructing an overlook near the site of the destroyed fishing pier. This overlook would be located further back from the water line and reducing the chances of future flood events, located about a quarter mile to the east of the existing fishing pier. It would still be in the general same area, still offer excellent view of the Vermillion River, and serve as a rest area for people using the hike bike path. The cost for this to build it, some of these funds are going to come from FEMA, but we went out and took quotes. Midwest Landscaping Company from Elk Point provided the lowest-most complete quota of a total of $30,470.55. That includes site design, vegetation removal, site grading, landscaping plants, amenities, and all labor. In addition, Vermillion Light and Power will install a solar light near the area. There is no electrical area down there, so a solar light would be the best option for us. Bring in the total cost of the project to $36,799.59. Project funding will come from federal FEMA, 80% of it, state-level FEMA, 10%, and the remainder, $3,680, will come from the general fund here in the city. Tonight, I'd like to have the council approve the contract with Midwest Landscaping Company for $30,470.55 to build an overlook along the cotton path or the bike path down to your cotton park.
Thank you, Mr. Goblish. Is there any visitors to be heard? Council for discussion. Councilor Lieber?
Just how big is this overlook going to be? And we haven't seen a plan for this at all yet, as far as how far back and how big is it?
Roughly, it's going to be connected to the path. About 20 feet by 20 feet, it's more of a circular area, will include a retaining wall, seating area, bike rack, trash can, and as I mentioned, a light. I don't have a diagram of it in here, but about a quarter mile from where the fishing pier was to the east.
Any other questions? Councilor Holland?
Isn't that near the end of the trail?
Not, not really. There's still quite a bit of trail left.
Isn't there benches and stuff already there along the trail?
Certain areas, but not in this area. There is not.
And it's misleading. It doesn't really overlook Cotton Park. It doesn't see Cotton Park at all.
It overlooks the river. It does not overlook Cotton Park, but it is part of what we would consider Cotton Park area.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any motions?
We approve. Second.
Motion by Councilor Helwig, second by Councilor Price. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item, we have a Tom Street Lift Station Engineering Change Order, or Shane, sorry.
Thank you. Back in 2022, the city entered into an engineering agreement with Banner Associates for the design of a new Tom Street Lift Station to replace the existing one. The cost of that agreement was $112,200. Project design started shortly after that. It was delayed slightly after city requested modifications to that lift station to lower it to accommodate sewer growth in the Jack Powell Edition that had been recently purchased. In May of 2023, after it went out to bid, we did award that project to H&amp;W Contracting. That project ended up with a substantial completion date of June 1, 2024. That completion date was not met, and to date, that project has yet to begin. Because of this, we have been tracking liquidated damages on that project. To, from, by February 24 of this year, we've accumulated $361,800 in liquidated damages on that project. Because of the delay and because of that request for modifications, Banner has prepared an amendment to the original contract that covers those two topics. The design modifications to serve the Jack Powell Edition come with a change of $7,066.50. The other item there is the additional work due to the delays. That comes with a cost of $14,695.80. These two modifications total $26,762.30, bringing a total contract with Banner Engineering to $138,962.30. Staff does anticipate that the LEDs, the liquidated damages that have been accumulated, would cover the additional work that's needed by Banner because of the delays, so that $14,695.80. We do anticipate that to be covered through the LEDs. The design modifications, that will be coming out of our own, own money, as we made those way before the delays were ever, ever happened. So the 2025 budget does not have any of the funds in place for this project, as we anticipated the project to be completed last year. So the money didn't get spent last year. We will need to revise that budget for this year, move it into this year to get, get that covered. With that, administration recommends approval of the amendment to the engineering agreement with Banner Associates for Tom Street Lift Station replacement in the amount of $26,762.30, bringing a total cost to $138,962.30.
Thank you, Shane. Any visitors to be heard? Council for discussion. Shane, can you just explain the liquidated damages for the people that are watching?
Yeah, so when, when a project, it's all been part of the contract documents. So when a project does not meet its substantial completion, there are penalties to the contractor for not finishing the project in that timeframe. They did not meet those timeframes, so you kind of have a choice. Do you give them a new deadline to do it, or do you collect liquidated damages that can cover losses on our city or any additional costs that we now get because we do not have a new lift station last June like we're supposed to? So any maintenance, anything that happened to the existing lift station to keep it operating up until this point, those are costs that we didn't think we were going to get, you know? So and there's also other things. I think it's really wide open at that point on what it can cover, but you do get a daily fine for the contractor for every day that they're past their completion date.
Thank you. Councilor Holland?
Their failure to meet the deadline caused Banner just to, more effort, more money. We can't directly charge them that, that bit from?
No, so this, because our contract with Banner for design and for the construction administration and observation, all of that was separate from this. So our contract with Banner is to do their work. They have to do more work because of what happened with H&amp;W's contract.
I understand that. So we can't charge?
Essentially, that's where the liquidated damages come in, is that when we get that, when they, you know, at the end, when I get a bill from Banner and it's over what it was, we're going to probably try to hold out that extra 20 or $14,000 and say, look, we're keeping this from you, H&amp;W, to pay Banner this extra money.
Basically, it's like restitution that would have to be given back, and worst case scenario, possible litigation or to get that. Correct, Darrell?
Thank you.
Councilor Helwig?
Start reading my mind. What if we go to litigation, right? Like, can we assess those fees as part of our liquidated damages?
I think that's a question for Darryl, probably.
Yeah, like, like most issues, it depends on what the contract says. I haven't looked at the specific liquidated damages, but as was stated, it's a daily amount because it's hard to determine what your actual damages are. So, you know, you're always better off in litigation with a contract that says X amount, you can recover that. Now, these additional costs depends on the contract language. But certainly, to your point, I don't see, there's not a downside to saying we're going to offset it until you get some resolution with the contractor.
Any questions? Motion? Motion approved by Councilor Holland. Is there a second? Second by Councilor Murrah. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Shane. Next, we have a Consolidated Board of Equalization Appointments. That's you, John. Or no, Katie.
That's me. Thank you. So the county, city, and school board each have adopted resolutions to have one board of equalization within the city limits. This board hears appeals from constituents within Vermillion. We need three city council members to sit on this board on April 15, and it starts at 1:00, and they say that they should be done by 4 or 5 that day.
Thank you, Katie. Any visitors to be heard? Council for discussion. Don't everybody volunteer at once? You what?
I've never volunteered.
I think Councilor Helwig just, I think Councilor Helwig. I think Councilor Helwig just volunteered. Just kidding. Just give me one second. I just wanted to see if our absentee members have said anything on that. Okay, no, they did not. I believe, I think Councilor Cheesman said that he's got class as well. I want to say I'm not 100% certain. Councilor Holland, did you have something?
I just said I'd volunteer. Where do they last the three hours they allocate?
What was the date again?
I will say, for those who may be considering it, when I've done it in the past, they often put the city stuff at the front.
And they do a very good package.
Let me look.
I don't think I've been there more than an hour, hour and a half. I have like three meetings back here.
I'm just looking at mine. Whoops. April 15. If I remember right, we usually had an alternate too, correct? If something came up?
Everybody's the alternate.
Sounds great to me. At what time? We had a ribbon cutting at 3:00. If we can get out of there, I'd volunteer. So as long as we can get out in two hours.
I want to say you should be able to, I've never.
We've never been two hours.
Yeah.
Okay. You can put me on that list. Rich, anybody else? I'm going to volunteer Jay.
Good idea.
He's in the banking world. I think he would understand some of this stuff. So any other discussion on that? I think we got our, our list. Do we need a motion on that or no? So motion for Councilor Toller, Holland, and myself for the, what is it, the equalization appointment, Consolidated Board of Equalization appointment?
For all.
Motion approved by Councilor Price, second by Councilor Lieber. Any other discussion? I just want to note, you saw who threw themselves out of the sword this year, so next come around. All right. All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item we have is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a trailer-mounted crack ceiling machine for the street department.
Thank you. Uh, at the budget session in 2024, the city council, uh, reviewed the proposed 2025 Equipment Replacement Fund. Uh, as part of the process, staff presented the option, uh, to replace the street department's 2010 Craftco SS250D, uh, trailer-mounted crack ceiling machine. Uh, staff proposes utilizing a Sourcewell bid awarded to Craftco, uh, for the purchase of a new Craftco Supershot 250D Trailer-Mounted Crack Ceiling Machine. Uh, the cost for this new equip, equipment is $80,147.40. At a later meeting, staff will ask, uh, the council for the existing trailer-mounted crack ceiling machine to be, uh, declare surplus for the sale through an online auctions, uh, service. Uh, the city will be purchasing directly from Craftco, uh, distributor located in Sauk Rapids, Minnesota. Uh, the distributor will honor this, honor their Sourcewell bid. Uh, the 2025 Equipment Replacement Fund includes $88,000, uh, for the purchase of a new trailer-mounted crack ceiling machine. Uh, based on the total, the city would save seven, a little bit less than $8,000. Uh, the savings would remain in the fund and be used on other purchases. Administration recommends approving the resolution to purchase a new Craftco Supershot 250D Trailer-Mounted Crack Ceiling Machine from Craftco, uh, out of Sauk Rapids, Minnesota for $80,147.40.
Council for discussion? Motion? Motion approved by Council Labor, is there a second? Second by Council Helwig. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item we have is, uh, bid openings for fuel quotes. Katie?
Thank you. We received three fuel quotes. Um, the low bid was with New Century FS. Um, item number one was $2.729. Um, item two is $2.819. Item three is $2.692, and item four is $2.90.
Thank you. Is there any visitors to be heard? Seeing none, council for discussion? Motion approved of the low bid by Council Price and a second by Council Helwig. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. City manager's report, John, take it away.
Thank you. Just a couple of upcoming meetings before your next city council meeting, March 17th. Uh, the Gulf Advisory Board meets this Wednesday at 5:15 at the Bluffs. The Human Relations Commission will be having their monthly meeting this Thursday, March 6th at 5:30 in the Memur Conference Room here at City Hall. And then the City's Historic Preservation Commission meets on Wednesday, March 12th at 9:00 a.m. in the Powell Conference Room here at City Hall. Uh, just an update on the Jolly School project. Um, asbestos abatement in the former building has been completed. They finished that up last Friday. Uh, we anticipate at your next meeting on March 17th, we will have demolition bids, uh, for you to consider, and hopefully we'll get demolition started, uh, end of March, first part of April, after we complete the contract steps that take place after any bid award is made. Uh, for those interested in going to the Municipal League District Dinner, that is on Wednesday, March 26th in Dell Rapids. Uh, if any city council member would like to attend, please let me know and we'll get you signed up for that. Uh, we have two raffle notifications. Kelsey's Kicks, um, this past weekend, they sold 50/50 raffle tickets on March 1st and 2nd during the youth soccer tournament. Those tickets were sold at $5 each, or five for $20, and the half the proceeds, uh, went to the winning ticket holder, with the other half going to purchase shin guards, shoes, and other equipment needed to participate in youth soccer. The second raffle notification we received today was the American Heart Association. Uh, through the South Miss, South Dakota Contestants, they're going to be selling uh, $10 raffle tickets from March 7th through the 18th of this year. They're using a Chase the Ace format with the proceeds going to the American Heart Association. That's all that I have.
Thank you, John. Next item, invoices payable. Has everyone had a chance to review the bills? Are there any questions on any of the bills? Council Genoine?
I see that, um, there's temporary fencing around the Jolly demo site. I've noticed this fencing. Is, is that something that we are keeping? Or what, what is the?
What number is that?
Um, it is number 12.